Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bragg.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Bray.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Patton.
Here.
Mayor Janney.
Here. And just for note, Councilmember Spriggs talked to me earlier this week. He had an unfortunate family problem. He had to leave town, so he's not going to be able to be here this evening. But he did let us know in advance, so. And joining us again this evening are the folks from Troop 866 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Young gentlemen, priests, come up and start us off. Then could everybody stand and join us?
If in uniform, salute. If not, right hand over your heart. Ready, vote. Face the flag. Ready, salute. Will you please join me on your side in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two.
And thank you, young men, for joining us this evening. And that really starts off a meeting with a good positive feeling, so thank you. Do we have any agenda changes requested for this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to pull item 2.5, just for discussion.
Okay, as in policy in the past, is it okay if we take item 2.5 to the end of the agenda?
That's fine.
Thank you. Any other changes requested? Entertain a motion to take item 2.5 off of consentment at the end of the agenda. A motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Moving on to mayor council reimbursements, disclosures, and community announcements. Ms. Bragg?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, this is reporting on my appointment with the MTS, the Metropolitan Transit System. And this is something that I work hard on every budgeting cycle along with my colleagues from National City and Chula Vista. Starting December 2nd, Tuesday through Friday, from 2:00 in the afternoon until 12:00 in the morning, 12:00, 12:00 a.m., there will be six police on our trains. And this is huge for the security of our patrons on the Blue Line. You know, the Blue Line carries the bulk of the ridership in our system. It's really going to be kind of neat because they will, for one week, they will take an officer from Chula Vista. Another week, there will be one from National City. Another week, one, another one from the Sheriff's Department. So this is good exposure for them as well and added security for those of us on the Blue Line. So I was, I'm pleased to have that, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a question for you at this point because you do represent us in MTS. I noticed that the system is getting a lot of the newer buses that are also quite a bit quieter, which if you look at some of the ones that go in through our neighborhood areas, even down Seacoast. Do you have any timeframe? And I don't want to hold you to it this evening, but you can come back with us and let us know when we might see like the complete phase out of the old ones in Imperial Beach on the 933-34?
I will, I will bring that back too, but it will be starting in 2015.
2015?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Bray? Mr. Patton?
Just the opening of our newest restaurant in Imperial Beach, Coronado Brewery, has now opened. Great family restaurant, and I drove by there tonight and looked like a full house. Excited for that.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I was thinking of the same thing. And as all of you know, and I hope all of you know, that the family that runs that business is also local as well. It might say Coronado Brewery on it, but they decided to call Imperial Beach Home as well. So I think it's a great addition to our community there. Mr. Hall, do we have anything from staff?
Mayor, we do. We have a couple of department heads who would like to introduce a couple of new staff members to the city council. And we'll start with our Public Works Director, Mr. Henclavie.
Counsel, is that on? Council and community, I'd like to introduce to you Kyle Henderson. Kyle is the new custodian for the city. Services all the city buildings with the exception of the fire station and the sheriff's station. And he comes to us from Pasadena. He was formerly employed at, um, um, Hamona and, uh, Sam Marino. I wanted to say Marina Valley, but it's Sam Marino, working in the recreation maintenance in those two communities. And so we're very pleased to have him here with us. He's an enthusiastic, energetic young man, and so we're real pleased to have him with us. Thank you.
Welcome.
And our human resources manager will introduce someone that we have working in the front office that the public will probably interact with.
Sure.
Good evening, Council, City Manager, Public. I want to introduce Sunim Carballo. She is currently working as the Deputy City Clerk for the City Clerk's Office, specifically under Jackie Hall, our City Clerk. And she has been working with us since October of 2013 as an administrative assistant through a temp agency. We went through a recruitment. She was one of our finalists and selected, and she was hired this September. Sunim has over 23 years of admin support experience, so welcome, Sunim.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, thank you very much, Erica. And I just want to say that I'm very happy to be a part of the IB team. Like Erica said, I've been here for a little over a year now, and I've really enjoyed my time here. And I can see that there's good things happening, so I look forward to being here quite a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, perhaps, Mr. Hall, you could speak a little bit to the filling of these positions. I think that's something that needs to be stated.
Sure. As the, most of the public knows, and certainly in the city council, the city did experience a little bit of a challenge when the, with the redevelopment agencies were dissolved. And so we had to reduce the staffing in the city. And what we've been able to do as the economy has improved is we've been able to refill some of those positions. And so it's exciting that we're being, we're starting to fill some of those positions and hopefully be able to provide better community service as, as well, so.
And just because Mr. Hall wanted to bring out the economy doing better, it actually comes from the fact that the city staff has found ways to manage ourselves within the budgets that we've given them. And I think that having the right personnel onboard is probably the number one most important thing for Imperial Beach because it's the people that do the work.
Continue with the introduction. Three people that are not present today. And excuse my pronunciation. I've asked her so many times how do I say her last name. It's Paulina Mama Wa. She works in the Fire Department, Public Safety, as an administrative assistant. She was also brought onboard as of last month. And she comes from a public sector working for the County of San Diego. So welcome, Paulina, as well. The next one is actually my staff. What we just said, we had a reduction of staff. I used to, before I got promoted to HR manager, I was a technician. And we recently brought in Nadia Moreno as the Office Specialist, which is actually a lower classification than the HR technician. She's part-time, but some support is better than no support. She actually volunteered through the San Diego State University as an intern. Her internship ended. She graduated with a bachelor's degree in public administration, decided to come back as a volunteer, non-paid volunteer, for over four months and applied for the position. She was also one of the finalists, and I have the pleasure of having her in my department. And she also supports the City Manager's Office, specifically Ed Villa here. So welcome, Nadia. And recently, Ryan Barr. He was one of our seasonal lifeguards since June 2009. We just promoted him to firefighter EMT. Again, we went through the recruitment process, internal promotional, and we selected him. And Ryan is part of the fire personnel and specifically the safer grand staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nekagawa, do you want to make an announcement for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, last week, the USC conducted a community outreach workshop on a sea level rise computer model, which is being developed by USGS. And it was very well attended. Councilmember Ed Spriggs was there. Joe Ellis with TAC was there. My hope was that the Chamber of Commerce would have been there, but for a variety of reasons, I guess, other members couldn't make it. Not too long ago, you had Danny Boudreau of the Tijuana Research Reserve make a presentation on her project. And I just wanted to let the council know that she is scheduled to speak on Saturday, November the 15th, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. That's a Saturday. And she will give a one-hour talk on what this curve project is all about. So I just wanted to make sure that the community members were aware of that.
And could you tell us where that might be? Where?
Oh, at the Tijuana Estuary Visitor Center.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hall, anything else? Stan? Public comments? I have one speaker slip. Ms. June Engel?
Hi, everyone. June Engel, Imperial Beach Branch Library Manager, 810 Imperial Beach Library. I just want to give you guys a little bit of update. I'm sorry to bring up the vote, but the San Diego County selected 15 places to have mail-in drop-off points, and our library was selected as one of three libraries to do that. And the reason I wanted to tell you about this because they told me that we had 550 mail-in ballots dropped off at our library, which is a significant number. I'm really proud that we were able to allow that to happen. And that's for Imperial Beach, 550 drop-in. That, that's a good number. We usually don't get that much in even as a voting facility. The second thing I wanted to say is last Saturday was our Dia de los Notos, and I always pronounce it Ryan, David, dead, in case you didn't understand my Spanish, program. It is our new signature program. And we had 130 people here. We had the Latino dancers, and we had a mariachi band. We had sugar skull making. It was just one of incredible event. I'm hoping next year you guys can maybe come to it because a great culture event, explaining exactly what the Dia de los Notos was. So it wasn't just a matter of you're getting some Mexican bread or you get to see some dancers. It was actually was educational as well, and I'm very proud of my staff for doing it. Last thing, I wish I had some updates for you on the new library, but I have not heard anything. I'm told sometime within the next month that we'll have at least a temporary location selected at that time. When I hear it, you'll hear it, or you'll probably hear it and tell me, for all I know. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so moving on to consent calendar items 2.1 through 2.6. We did move 2.5 to the end. I entertain a motion to adopt. We have a motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Moving on to item 3.1, Mr. Hall?
Mayor and Council, we would like to introduce an ordinance tonight that is just a cleanup ordinance to your municipal ordinance. What has previously been in your ordinance in times past is that if an item is not covered by our municipal code, we would typically refer to Robert's Rules of Order. There was a new publication put, oh, it's not new, but there was a publication put out that is more consistent with California municipal law called Rosenberg's Rules. And so what we're asking is that we amend our municipal code to include that if there's not, an item that is not covered by our municipal code, we would reuse the Rosenberg's Rules as a guide for decision-making. And then also, one other small change is we just want to make sure it's clear when we, when we reappoint people to boards and commissions. So those are just two simple cleanup items, and we're asking to introduce that ordinance tonight, take any public comment, if there is any, and then set a second reading of that ordinance for the consent calendar on December 3rd, 2014.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker slips on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions, comments for staff on this? This is like Mr. Hall mentioned, just kind of a cleanup through our municipal codes, but any thoughts, questions?
I would just ask the city attorney and also our city clerk, if, I mean, Robert's Rules of Orders is pretty clear. How often do we anticipate having to revert back to this? This is just a, a safety net in this exception here for appointments?
Well, actually, the city has a pretty extensive chapter on city council procedures, which pretty much covers everything. There are a few things that are a little different or that are, that fill in the gaps in Rosenberg's, but I can tell you, at least in the four years I've been here, I've never had to refer to Robert's Rules to make a determination on these procedural issues because your municipal code pretty much covers it. But Robert's Rules is a little bit, it's not as user-friendly for city council. It's more of like a parliamentary rulebook. And Rosenberg was drafted by a judge in California that was on a lot of boards and commissions, five-member boards of commissions, which is more applicable. So I think it's really going to, it's just there on the off chance something can't be decided upon, and then you look at Rosenberg's, which is really simple. If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's, it's a quick read, and it's really simple to look at and read through.
Any other thoughts, comments? Then I'd call for the reading of the title of ordinance 2014-1148.
Ordinance Number 2014-1148, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Imperial Beach, California, amending Title II Administration and Personnel Sections 2.12.140 and 2.18.010 of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code related to council procedures and city commissions.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance by title only, with full reading, which amends various sections of Title II of the IB Municipal Code and schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance on December 3rd, 2014. Before we can vote, that was December 3rd. That's some?
That's correct.
Okay.
Consent agenda, December 3rd.
Okay. Thank, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Moving on to item 4.1, public hearing. Clear the public hearing open. Mr. Hall?
Mayor and Council, this is an administrative hearing of the city council, and I'll turn some time over to the Community Development Director to address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hall and Mayor members of the council. Before you tonight is your consideration of Resolution 214-7527, which if approved by the council would take outstanding and recorded liens placed on the property at 822 Georgia Street into an abeyance and probationary schedule for reduction of those penalties. A little history on the property. In, on December 25th of 2006, the property, a single-family home, was severely damaged by fire. That began a somewhat lengthy process of code compliance activity on the case beginning in, or on the property beginning in January of 2007. As you may know, that was the, sort of the onset of the economic recession, and many people is with this property owner were experiencing some hardships. We began to notice violations and provide notices to the property owner. However, the owner was unable to abate the violations and respond to those notices, which resulted over time in administrative citations being issued as well as civil penalties being imposed, resulting in a council hearing on November 21st of that year, at which $12,400 in civil penalties had accrued and was placed as, on the property as a, as a civil penalty assessment. The property continued to experience some, or the property owner continued to experience financial hardships and was unable to respond to those, those penalties. And over time, additional penalties, interest, and, and late charges accrued, and various liens were placed on the property. Today, those liens total $54,000, $54,900. What, and in June of this year, there's a, there's two letters attached to your staff report. "We were approached by a representative of the property owner seeking relief from those liens so that the property could be retained as ownership and plans for development." I will say that ultimately, the property was demolished as a result of the notices. The property owner was responsive ultimately to demolish the property and, and then leave the vacant lot. There were some subsequent issues with the vacant lot, but again, today, they have been maintaining that property. The property owner's representative contacted us. We met with them in July of this year and again requested relief. And after meeting with the property owner and his representatives, and in the interest of trying to allow the property owner to maintain ownership, I will say that there's also outstanding property tax liens on the property. We are recommending to the city council to consider placing our civil penalties and assessments in abeyance, which would allow them to pay off their other property taxes and get the property developed, get it out from underneath the, the recorded lien burden. The resolution before you would establish a seven-year probationary period. Oh, and by the way, as a result of the meetings, in the second letter that's attached from the representative, the property owner agreed to a variety of things to provide to staff a level of comfort that the property owner was now in a position to take, to maintain the property and move it forward for development. Among those things were to fence the property off, to secure the property, which the property owner did, to enter into a contract for regular maintenance with, which the property owner did, and to remove any outstanding violations, which the property owner did. The property has been maintained in, in good condition, fenced and, and secured, and their contract has been, for maintenance, has been ongoing. We also asked the property owner to actively seek development partners or to, if necessary, sell the property for development, and the property owner has done that. As yet, there is no deal in place to develop the property. Nevertheless, it's our recommendation, as mentioned in the resolution, to place the, the outstanding city civil penalties and fines of $54,900 into an abeyance schedule and a probationary period of seven years, during which time a portion of those civil penalties will be reduced for each year that the property remains in compliance with the municipal code. We have also asked that the property owner actively seek development of the property. If the property either is foreclosed upon and there's some last-minute agenda item information, which adds some language to the resolution. If the property is either foreclosed upon or goes to tax lien sale, which currently is scheduled for March of this year, then the city has the option of reimposing those penalties so that the staff time and penalties that were accrued for this, for the city's efforts would be paid during that either tax lien or foreclosure. That's what's recommended. We, we've seen active participation on the property owner to keep the property in, in a good state of repair. However, the objective here, and one of the reasons we're recommending this, is never to exact fines from a property owner, but rather to get the property in a, in a reasonable state so it's not an impact to surrounding properties and residences and neighbors, and that the property can be a viable, developed property that can be, provide a home to families for the city of Imperial Beach. So given that objective, it's our recommendation to place the fines into an abeyance, remove them as a lien from the property to allow the property owner to pay off the other property tax liens, hold on to the property, and actively seek its development. And if you have any questions, I believe there's representatives of the property owner and the property owner here, and staff would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. And I do have a slip here from Mr. Adams, representing the property owner. You're available for questions if we have any from the council level. Thank you. I appreciate you coming on this evening. Do we have any comments, questions on this item? I think that Mr. Wade kind of hit right on it. I mean, the goal is to get the properties to improve, not, we were never out there for the financial end of it. Sometimes we have to use that big stick to get people to move forward a little bit. It's disappointing that we have to do it that way, but in this case, it looks like they're working with us. I think the idea of trying to work with them is really where we'd like to go, but I'm willing to hear anything from my colleagues on this particular item.
I just think it's awfully generous, and I think the city obviously worked with you and, uh, I think it's a good thing that we get this cleaned up, and it is cleaned up. And my question is, when it does transfer to a new owner, what happens? Does this just all disappear?
If the, if the current property owner actively seeks sale for the property, of the property for development, this would, this would go, well, actually, it's recorded on the property, so the new property owner would be subject to this abeyance schedule. So if the property owner that buys the property does not upkeep the property, maintain it either as a vacant lot or in terms of development, this abeyance schedule would still be on, on record, and we could impose these fines. We'd come back to the council, however, to do so.
Thank you. Ms. Bragg?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor stated, our goal is never to make money out of hardships from people. You know, if you look at the, at the staff report, this was a fire on Christmas Day. You know, how devastating to this family. They've experienced extreme financial hardships, and through it all, have still been able to pay over $8,000 in past due fines. So the active participation that Mr. Wade spoke about really goes a long way with me. And Mr. Wade, I'd like to commend your department for working with this property owner. It's always about compliance, so I would move this item forward.
I would second that motion, but I was going to ask some questions of both staff and perhaps even the property owner or their representative. I mean, this concept of a carrot and a stick is very good, but I'm a little concerned. I still don't consider properties with a chain link fence around them to be an improvement for a neighborhood. And I'm wondering from a staff level if there's a way that we can put a timeline on it, that whether it be this particular property owner or a future one, that it can't just stay even a well-maintained, chain-link fenced yard in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So I'm wondering on that, if you would?
Well, you know, I just want to bring up, sometimes circumstances happen, like Ninth and Palm. We've had a fence around that for a long time.
I understand, but I mean, the thing is, we're, we're giving quite a bit here as far as that, and I just want to know how that would work. I mean, the fact that the property owner is representative or here from a staff level, is that something possible?
It is possible, and if the city attorney wants to address it, it is possible to add it into the resolution. We would ask that the, that the property owner agree to it. I will say that there is a, an impending tax lien sale of May 20, or sorry, March 25th, I believe. But if, if needed, we could say, you know, we would like to see an active or a plan for development of the property or sale of the property by the end of February. I mean, that would be, you know, beyond that, I think he already has somewhat of a, of a date that he has to, to, to perform by, but assuming he, he does, there's no date in this resolution now, so it is something we can do if it's the, if the council chooses.
I guess maybe I need clarification. Maybe what it is with the, the pending tax lien sale on there, that's a big enough stick that we don't need to add more to it necessarily. It sounds like that that's where you were going originally, and that's why there's a schedule on all these, so maybe my thoughts aren't in line because that might be a bigger stick than we wanted to put out there anyway.
Perhaps. I mean, I guess the question would be then, what happens after that? Assuming the property owner hopefully can, can make, meet those obligations and retains ownership of the property, we'd still like to see them move forward with, you know, an active development plan for the site after that date. And again, it's really the, up to the council.
I'm willing to ask, sirs, what would it do to you? I mean, we're not looking to put added constraints, but we're trying to protect our neighborhoods out there, so.
Well, he's got to come up with some $30,000, $30,000, $30,000 from over the county, which he believes he can do by, before that tax lien sale. So it is our intention, it is his intention to go ahead and seek a partner or develop it himself, although if a timeframe is added for development, I would ask that because of the deadline for raising the money to, to pay off the tax liens that he'd be allowed...
You're going to be struggling to do that first, I know, so we're, we're kind of hurting it a little bit too much. Okay, well, since I made the second to your motion, I'm willing to stand by what the staff has got recommended before us. got recommended before us, myself. I mean, it kind of clarified it. I was wondering to see how it is, and I know that's a big nut to crack coming up in March, so hopefully you can get that and get a partner or figure out what we can do on it, is what I'm thinking. Any other thoughts or questions for the property owner's representative? I don't have any. So we, I guess I first need to close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I'll close the public hearing, and we do have a motion and a second on the table for 2014-7627. Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, item 5.1, Mr. Hall.
Mayor and council, the next item is an annual report from our Business Improvement District, as well as an introduction of their budget for the upcoming year. We have with us representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Business Improvement District, and they wanted to share a little bit about what they were able to accomplish in the past year and some of the ideas that they have for the forthcoming year. So I'll let them introduce themselves, but I think you know Joanne and Christine quite well, so.
Hi, my name is Joanne Barles, and I am the president of the Imperial Beach Chamber, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have, because I know you guys received a copy of our, our reports, so I'm ready.
Because basically what we have before us is just setting the public hearing to move forward to BID.
Yes.
And I think Mr. Hall kind of explained it. You presented what you spent, what you're going to spend, and you've got a beautiful picture here, because this is something that happened throughout the city of Imperial Beach, not any one particular neighborhood, and then of course, our fire departments, and I even saw a lifeguard out today, are assisting and putting those flags up. It's Veterans Day coming up soon, and so I think that's appropriate. But do we have any questions for the folks from the BID? Because this is, we're going to set the public hearing.
Yeah, I do.
Good, please.
Um, I think I mentioned this last year, but I don't think you were here. Taste of Ivy. You've known, you see Seacoast and some around that area. There's a few more restaurants than there was last year. And I see in the budget, in one item, it's a thousand dollars, and then in another item, it's fifteen hundred. The thousand was 2013. So 2014, it's fifteen hundred dollars for Taste of Ivy. Do you have any bigger, grander plans this year?
Yes, we do. We're planning on, we're planning on making that a larger day event, like we're presently working on doing a five to 10 K run like in the morning, and then doing the Taste of Ivy in the afternoon, and then doing the sunset concert in the evening from San Diego State is going to do a concert down at the pier, which is going to be wonderful. But mentioning, like the, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous, but mentioning the restaurants, the more restaurants, like we want to make it bigger this year. Like we really want to focus on the restaurants, like making it more, more of a taste. And like, that's still working, we're still in the work.
Well, it sounds.
But if you have any suggestions?
Well, it's going to be a great day. I think what you just suggested, a 5K, the Taste of Ivy, the concert, that sounds like a full day to me. So is fifteen hundred dollars enough to do all that?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yes, but we have a miscellaneous budget of three thousand and some dollars that we might pull for.
And then a lot of volunteers, I would imagine.
Lots, yes.
And I know you reach out and also get support from others in the Taste Ivy, don't you, don't you? Either the port, doesn't somebody else contribute to the?
Yes, the county, the enhancement, the edco grant, and also support.
Okay.
So we do get money from all three.
Well, you know, I think we could bring a lot of people into this town, and a lot of people in, that currently live in this town to try out some of these nice restaurants, so, thank you.
You know, I might add that the concert that they're referring to was also a port-sponsored event in our behalf, which is the Symphony by the Sea, so we're going to tie those two together, so it'll be a really nice day.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Ms. Bragg?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hall, I was wondering, are my questions appropriate now at this meeting, so that if they do not have the answers to these questions, they could bring them back at the next meeting, or should I wait till the next?
You know, that's a great question. Tonight, what we're really doing, this was supposed to be an annual report for what they've done in the past year, and then establishing a public hearing for the December 10th meeting. And it might be more appropriate if you want the public to be able to comment on any of the concerns or any of the suggestions you have to be brought up at the public hearing rather than tonight. Tonight really is a review of last year and setting the public hearing for going forward. So, again, not knowing what your comments are, they certainly would be appropriate either time. Say, do what you want, I'm going to be.
Okay, he said I could do what I want to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Bring it up.
Thanks, Andy, we appreciate that. Christine and Joanne, thank you for being here and representing the Chamber of Commerce and Business Improvement District. I do have some questions that I wanted to bring forward to you tonight, so that if you didn't have the answers, you could bring that back at the next meeting. And I was looking at the, at the cover page of attachment too, that has been prepared by Mike Osborne, and speaking to what my colleague was talking about, the Taste of Ivy, it says the Taste of Ivy was held to promote business in Imperial Beach, I think should have said to Imperial Beach residents and visitors. My question is, how many tickets were sold? How much money was raised? You know, this is a historical event. I'm interested in seeing that this event is growing. So if you could validate those numbers and maybe show some projections to us, I would really appreciate that.
I have in front of me, in 2012, we sold seventeen hundred and twenty-six dollars in tickets.
How much, could you repeat that number, Joanne?
One thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. And last year, it was twenty-five hundred dollars in ticket sales.
Nice, nice increase, very good.
So, I mean, I feel like every year, it's going up.
Do you have any numbers on the participation? I mean, the tickets speak to that somewhat, but participation from the businesses?
Yes, they do.
How many were repeat businesses? How many were new businesses?
There was, in 2013, there was forty businesses that participated, and that's with the booths. Anybody from Third Avenue, back to 13, received a free booth at the pier, and, and then the businesses along Third and Seacoast. So there was forty businesses. So this year, we're hoping for a lot more, so.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, the Business Improvement District is designed to benefit all the businesses in Imperial Beach, and it's laid out, and that's laid out in our ordinance, it was laid out that way purposely. So I'm so glad to see you including other businesses that are not directly in high traffic areas like Seacoast Drive. So I would like to see you open that up to businesses on 13th, businesses further down, and I, I'm seeing some support for that idea from some, some of your staff members that are in the audience, and I appreciate that. I do have some other questions that I, I don't know if you can answer them tonight or you want to bring them back to us?
Go ahead. I'm ready.
At the next meet, okay. And this goes to, this is on your 2013, 2014 budget. I see a, and please, for the audience's sake, this city council is not here to direct the Business Improvement District on how to spend this money. We have a hands-off policy. My question just speak to your budget so that I can understand it a little bit more clearly and be in more support of your great work. There is a reimbursement to Karen Odermat of five hundred and thirty-three dollars, but I don't know what that's for.
Uh, that was for the, the blue bags, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. We had bags made, totes like.
Okay.
Cloth totes, and it says Imperial Beach on them, and she went ahead and ordered them on her card, and we reimbursed her.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You also have under general promotions, this one is, colleagues, this is very important to me, because it's about to promote the promotion of the city of Imperial Beach, also our chamber. Can you talk to, and it was almost ten thousand dollars for brochure distribution?
Uh huh.
How many brochures and where are they being distributed?
They've not been made yet.
Okay.
That ten thousand dollars is only part of the cost. That ten thousand dollars would be for the cost to.
To put in, I, I'll step in. The, the ten thousand dollars was for certified folder, and it was for putting in all the visitor center in San Diego, at the airports, it was.
Five hundred in some locations, actually.
Yes.
Perfect.
So to get Imperial Beach out, you know their name out there, so I think there was a misunderstanding about the ten thousand dollars, because you have to have the brochure in order to, so we're working on that right now.
Okay. My, my misunderstanding wasn't about, had nothing to do with dollar amounts, I was just very excited to see this happening, that this brochure was being distributed throughout the region to increase tourism here in Imperial Beach. Let me put my glasses back on.
Like if I may interrupt.
Okay.
You also, um, this might not be the right time either, like I, okay, speaking of timing, but we will need another ten thousand dollars, like to actually have them made. They're going to be making, I think, like fifty thousand or a hundred thousand brochures. So we were going to come to the city and ask for your support to partner up with us, like to get the city's information out to all these locations, like if that's something that's in your budget, I guess it's the wrong time.
Because we've got a hands-off with the BID, let's be careful here what we're trying to mix, the BID and the city.
Would you have a certain amount of money?
Christine, we just went through the idea, Ms. Bragg brought it up, that we're hands-off on BID budgets, so I don't think you want to try to mix it. If there's a promotional opportunity, I know Mr. Hall has in his budget, some promotional stuff, but I don't think it's part of the BID. I mean, we can't, that's, that can't be part of our discussion on this thing here, we don't get into your funds. So I know what you're asking for, but it's just not the right plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I did in particular want, want to point out the four thousand dollars for the promotion of the Sun and Sea Festival. Can you speak a little bit to that? Was that?
Yes, Sun and Sea came to the BID meeting and, and asked for four thousand dollars for music, so that's where the four thousand dollars came in.
For music, it went under that category.
Okay, okay. So just, just going forward for my own personal benefit for, on those expenditures, if there could be, you know, an explanation, is all I'm asking. Can we move on to the 2014, 2015 budget? I just had a couple of questions. Mayor, if you'll please indulge me.
Hey.
Most of the questions have already been answered, although under beautification and special projects, the holiday flags, I didn't see a dollar amount. Does that include the patriotic flags? It looks like it's item number 21 on your budget there. Holiday flags, could that, I don't see a dollar amount, but is that? Okay. You can bring that back.
The holiday decorations and the holiday flags, that's combined together.
Oh, that's combined, okay.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And then the San Diego Tourism Authority, for seventeen hundred dollars, it's item number 32. Is that a membership to the San Diego Tourism Authority?
I think it's for both. If I'm not mistaken, it's for the membership and for an ad, correct?
No, that's separate. That's for the membership, and this is for the ad. Like we placed an ad to come out this month, like in their fall, fall magazine for, for this city, like to promote the city, like get visitors to come to the city, that's what that was.
But it is also a, a membership?
No.
No, it's not? Okay.
That's a separate line item, like the membership is under the Visitors Planning Guide, the 958, do you see that?
Yeah.
That was for the membership.
That's their membership, okay. I thought perhaps maybe that was a map.
No.
No, okay. I'm very familiar with the Tourism Authority, and I would encourage your, your partnership with them. They can help you do great things, so I would ask you to get the most you can out of your membership with them. And I, that concludes my questions.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for, at the moment? Because we're here to set the public hearing to move forward with next year for the Business Improvement District. Not seeing any. And I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-7521, setting public hearing for December 10th, to consider levying the physical year 2014-15 assessment for the BID.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 5.2, Mr. Hall.
Mayor and council, the next item, as you know, back in February and March, the city council identified some priorities and adopted a two-year implementation schedule for your capital improvements program. What we're finding is that those projects are now starting to commence, and we'll need a lot of engineering oversight. We recently hired a new engineering firm, NV5, that the city council is familiar with, and I have consulted with our public works director, and we are asking for an addendum to that contract that would allow us to use some of the personnel at NV5 to help us manage those capital improvement projects as we roll them out. As you know, we have limited staff in our public works department, they're pretty overwhelmed, and this will allow us to keep these projects moving along and make sure that we have engineering oversight as we go forward. You certainly have your public works director here, as well as Carmen from NV5 to answer any questions you might have, but essentially, this is just an addendum to this contract to allow these public work projects to move forward in a, in a more expeditious and efficient manner.
Thank you. I personally think this is an excellent idea, because I know that from this council, including Mr. Spriggs, who's not here, we'd asked to do several projects along the way, and we understand that staffing is a problem. I think this might be something that could set an example of how we can get some of those things done a little more expeditiously, so I definitely support the idea. Do we have any other thoughts amongst my colleagues? Then I'd make the motion to adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the contract for the city engineer.
Second that.
The, the resolution, just for clarification, is 2014-7524.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Could we please vote? And speaking, go ahead.
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
And speaking of capital projects, Mr. Hall, a sidewalk.
Yes, Mayor and council, one of the items that you identified as a priority was placement of sidewalk along Delaware Street as the new Ninth and Palm commercial project commences. And as you know, there's some physical constraints there, so what staff is asking tonight is for you to review a potential solution to that problem, and so that we can start to design that and move forward with the priority that you established. And Mr. Levine will present that to you.
Mayor and council, and a follow-up with the city managers outlined, unfortunately, this is not the slide that I want, sorry. The slide that I'm showing here says preliminary plan. We looked at a number of ways to try to put sidewalk on the west side of Delaware in the 700 and 800 blocks. This is the blocks between Alma Avenue, which is on the upper left-hand corner, north, past Donix, this is Donix intersection, repeated over here, and then this is the alley next to the Breakwater project, planned project for, for Ninth and Palm. This top side is, is a west side of the street, and if you've driven down there, you're well aware that that slope going from the street up to the properties is, is pretty steep. It's, the most, there's at least one of those is 22 degrees already, and so looking at trying to put a sidewalk adjacent to the curb that's there now, would increase that slope to somewhere around 24, 25 degrees. That's pretty steep, and it would require us to replace the driveway all the way up to the frontage of their, of their residence. And it is my belief, and I had tried to outline it in the staff report, that the impact on the, on the neighborhood is substantial. that, uh, the impact on the, on the neighborhood is substantial, um, and it might better serve the neighborhood and the, uh, access to the, to the backside of Breakwater, of putting a, a wider sidewalk on the, uh, east side of Delaware Avenue. I might point out, uh, on yours, on your, um, on this, uh, dra, drawing, is this, um, line, um, whoops, try that again. This line right here is roughly twenty-two feet, this is a right-of-way line, uh, is roughly twenty-two feet from the property, uh, from the side edge of this, of the curb. So the city has an eighty-foot right-of-way here. And, um, so, and, and that's true on both sides. So, um, staff's recommendation for yours can, for you to consider is, instead of putting sidewalk on the north side, on the west side, put an eight-foot sidewalk on the, uh, east side, allowing, um, a, a comfortable trans, uh, pedestrian transit from Elm all the way into the shopping center, um, on the, on the backside. And that still leaves, um, uh, many feet, you know, um, roughly, I guess it would be sixteen feet, um, um, of, of right-of-way before you get to the property line on this side. So my proposal, uh, is that, um, we go to the, the neighbors in this area, and this is what, part of what I'm requesting from you, is permission to do this, with, this is an outline to start from, and talk to the neighbors about, um, uh, this plan and see, uh, what kind of feedback I get from them. I know, uh, there is, um, from previous visits out there, there are concerns about any sidewalk being put in there. Um, and so, um, I need to, I think, coordinate with them and get their feedback. What I point out also, over here at the alley, if I can get the pointer to work, um, this property right in here, this area right in here has six or eight quite fairly mature trees. Uh, the sidewalk going through here is going to have an impact on those trees, there is a couple other places it has impact, but this is gonna have the most impact in terms of the number of trees that are in the way. Um, but by putting a curbside, uh, rather than, uh, with a parkway in here, uh, I think, uh, will provide the most, uh, um, shade, if you will, or least impact on the, the shade that the, the trees will provide at some of these properties. So again, my recommendation to you, or request of you, is to, uh, ad, accept this as a, uh, a, a first plan, if you will, that we can then talk to the community about, um, and then, um, uh, the, right now, what you funded is just the design of it, they appro, they only have appropriated funds for it, so, at, before we would, uh, go forward with a, a bid, um, advertisement, we would come back to you and say, this is roughly what the cost is, is what we've come up with, and, um, ask for appropriation to cover the estimated construction costs and, hopefully that's part of my, enough, the, the other, I guess one other thing that I would say to you is this, this one block here, which is between Donix and the alley, is not quite as, is nowhere near as steep, and there may be a possibility of putting, uh, sidewalk on this side coming off of the, uh, shopping center. I, I do know that the gate or entry pedestrian access to the shopping center from this side is currently designed to come in at this location, roughly here, which would match up with the sidewalk on this side. We would for sure put ADA ramp, compliant ramps here, so if you came across, you could get down on this side if, if we find that this is not, uh, something that's compatible. I'm open for questions.
Okay, do we have any public speaker slips on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So, questions for Mr. Levine, Mr. Patton?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, getting, uh, public feedback is a must, obviously, and I'm glad you're doing that. You know, I, I drove that area, and then after listening to you, I think I'd need a, like a guided tour from you to, just gotta get a better feel of this. And I don't notice, um, I call them the dreaded bulbouts, are there no bulbs?
We have plenty of right-of-way, so we do not need one, the bulbouts in many places are where we don't have the right-of-way to, to be able to, to construct an ADA compliant ramp.
Okay, so those are difficult for drivers, like rushing real, trying to drive it, pull out of a bulbout. Um, so I'm glad those aren't there, um, and so what's the next step after, uh, one meeting with the public, you're gonna give them flyers and we're gonna have like?
Yeah, I, uh, I will put, uh, put out a letter to all of them, tell them that we're working on a plan, and invite them to come meet with me and the engineer, um, to look at, um, a concept, this concept, and, um, uh, try to get their concerns and figure out, you know, how to best meet your objective of getting adequate pedestrian way through there and, and, and have it not impact them, their neighborhood, their properties is, uh, too much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bragg?
Thank you, Mayor, um, Mr. Levine, thank you for the report, I do have a couple of questions. Um, where are you planning on having these meetings for the residents there?
Um, probably here, um, I, I, that's when we did, uh, ones on, um, the three, three hundred block of Elder and Evergreen, I think it was, that we met here with the property owners, in the community room in the back.
Okay, the reason why I ask is I, I sometimes think that we need to do a little bit more outreach right into the neighborhoods, and I would like to suggest maybe having the meeting in the neighborhood, taking our plans down there, you know, when we had that one, that meeting where we had the, about the lighting, the demonstration lighting, public really responded well to that, and, uh, this is gonna be huge for these people involved in this. So, I would like to suggest that, I don't know if we've tried it before, but I think it's kind of a neat idea, to take the meeting right to the people. My other comment is, um, that I'm a little bit concerned about the twenty-two feet, um, public right-of-way that the, and it says in here that the individual resident would have the opportunity to enjoy and use as part of their front yard. Does that mean they get to take ownership of this portion of it, and what if they're, you know, I mean, what does that mean exactly?
Well, if you, if you go down that street now, you'll see that many people have used the right-of-way as part of their front yard, and this would not impact that as much as if we put a parkway through there, because it'd be curbside. Our code says that we should, when we have a right-of-way like this, we should put a parkway in, but I'm suggesting to you that we not follow the code in this instance, just to, because we're not gonna be putting sidewalk on both sides if you accept this idea.
I'm glad to hear you say that, because I think that if people have been enjoying that use, and then to come in there and say, well, sorry, you know, that it would, it would, I know it would, for me, you know, be a difficult pill to swallow.
Well, I mean, there, like I say, I've walked the neighborhood, um, in, in times past, and, uh, those who've seen me there come out and, you know, they're, they're not anxious to have a sidewalk there at all. But, um, obviously, that's part of the city objective, is to try to, to put sidewalk and provide access for pedestrians, it's better than walking down the middle of the street.
Mm-hmm.
And I should probably point out that in most of our roadways in the community, the right-of-way is actually wider than the road, and lots of times, there's a great deal, the front yard is actually within the right-of-way, and I know you're aware of that, but I wanted to make sure that.
Okay.
The audience is.
Okay, thank you, as Mr. Patton stated, you know, the community outreach, the input from the residents there is going to be huge. So I just want to make sure that we do all that we can, and, and I know you always do, Mr. Le, Levine, and I appreciate that, but, um, you know, anything around our Breakwater project, I think we really need to put it under real close scrutiny, so I appreciate your efforts in that, thank you.
I'm going back to the right-of-way. So, we're gonna put a sidewalk in on one side of the street, and there is another, looking at this drawing, Mr. Levine, another fifteen feet of public right-of-way on the eastern side of that sidewalk?
There would be, um, yeah, eight minus twenty-two, six, sixteen feet, right?
And then on the other side, where we're not putting a sidewalk, we have twenty-some odd feet?
We also have twenty-two feet.
What are we doing with that land?
Um, we are doing, the city's doing nothing with that land.
Um, and it might take more than yourself, Mr. Levine, wh, why is that public right-of-way? The street, the sidewalk, I consider, consider public right-of-way, I mean, you've mentioned that people use it as front yards, um, I'm gonna ask a question about parkways in a minute, but why do we maintain that? And not, if you look at our code or our general plan, someplace in there it said something about giving away excess amounts of what we have for a right-of-way out there, why are we not doing that in this case, when we've got a really unique situation here?
I don't have an answer, I mean, I never, it's never been my task to go around and say, hey, do you, where, the city's giving up property, I mean.
Right now, we're looking at a particular block, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing with this thing here, and I, I do know some places, either in our code or general plan, just talk about what we're doing with this excess amount of right-of-ways.
Yeah, on, on these right-of-ways, where the City Council determines that the road would never be widened and the right-of-way would never be used, the City Council could vacate that, portions of that right-of-way and relinquish that ownership back to the adjacent property owners, that is possible. There's a process to do that, if that's something the council would like us to explore.
I, I think that since you're going through design, I would like to, at some point, to explore that, because I think that it's, it's something that allows then, if, if one neighbor has been able to utilize it, and the other one thinks, well, it's public right-of-way, why do I do the investment? We give him the opportunity to invest in it, because it's gonna be his property, I think that's worth it to us. But maybe it doesn't work, and until we have that discussion, I don't know if we can figure out if it does work, so. Because we don't wanna, you know, if we need the right-of-way for something in the future, I totally agree with it, we've gotta be careful, but I wanna look at it, and I think now's the opportunity to bring it up, is a question to look into.
Yeah, I, I certainly can, certainly can do that, I, you know, it's been my, um, I guess, feedback to, to council members who've asked that, is I, it's pretty hard to know what you're gonna do in twenty years, um, where you might decide that it would have been nicer to had that right-of-way, because you were gonna put a boulevard in there, or you're gonna, you know, because of, who knows, we don't have a master plan on how the city's gonna look.
It's time we have the discussion on it, because this might not be the street that it applies to, but there's several others throughout Imperial Beach that it might, I ju, I would just like to have the discussion, it doesn't have to necessarily be completely connected to this project, but I see an opportunity to bring it forward. So, and it, like you said, it might be something that we don't wanna look at, but I think we should follow with some of the guidelines we are. And then going on to something that I don't know how to do it, parkways are starting to bother me. We're in, right now, in a serious water condition in the state of California, and parkways, um, seem to be the easier thing to give up on. Uh, and then the policy on parkways, you mentioned that we have a policy that we should be putting a parkway here, but we have certain, you know, reasons why we're not. Um, is there a way we can look at what we can do with parkways that is not purely turf? Um, maybe if we were able to provide guidance to those folks that wanna make improvements to those parkways, that's beyond the turf, because, uh, maybe it's not the greatest place for turf. I mean, it might look good, but without the trees there, and, you know, with the water situation, I don't expect it to get really good this year, but maybe we, as a, a city, can give a look at with a, perhaps at the professional landscape designer or something, or what could go there that's not purely turf. And I, I, I know that that might not be associated with this particular project, but I think that now's the time to start looking at it, because it, I'm not sure if it's gonna get worse, I hope it doesn't, but, um, it's be, better to give our, our residents opportunities to do something different.
The, your, your code does not require turf, uh, it just says if you're going to put, uh, plants above certain height, if, uh, then you need to get permission from the, the city to do that. So you'll see a lot of trees there, you see nothing.
Put in hardscape in there?
A lot of people have done that, they've put block in there, or put gravel in there, if you would drive around various places, they, they put.
What I, what I was hoping for, and, and it's not necessarily to say I want everybody to have the same red tile roof, but, um, we might have an opportunity here to give some guidance and some opportunities at something that looks aesthetically pleasing, functional, and easy for the property owner to maintain, I mean, things have changed since the days, my friend of mine has got turf in it, you know, it's, it's a pain in the butt.
I, I certainly, um, am supportive of that, I don't have any, I don't have any negative feedback on that, I, the, the only, uh, other caveat I would guess I'd add to it is, we are, we are trying to at least staff, and I think we're following, hopefully we're following your direction, is trying to make the city more walkable, and a wider sidewalk, uh, makes that. These four-foot, five-foot sidewalks we have makes it difficult to.
Well, maybe we need to, maybe we need to figure out a way of giving up parkway for more sidewalk, I mean, it still comes out with the same benefit that we're not asking somebody to maintain.
Understood.
In the case of, in front of my particular house, it's, you know, one long moral width wide, or, and that's it, there's not much there. Some others are a lot wider, but I, I just would like us to study that eventually here.
Sure.
Please, Ms. Bragg?
One more question, Mr. Levine, are we anticipating removing some trees in this location?
In order to put sidewalk through there, we're gonna have to have, uh, some trees re, um, removed, yes. And particularly at this one corner down at the alley, um, at the north end of Donix. There are, I think there's six trees in here, you can see, um, I mean, I could show it to you a little bit in another, uh, presentation, if you wanted to use a camera on it, and I could show you that site. You can see there's a, I think there's, well, let's see, I've got two, four, yeah, there's six trees there, uh, largely in front of, um, seven seventy-five extending between here and here, there are six trees. A couple of them are not in the way, if you put the sidewalk curbside, if you move the sidewalk away from the curb, you might save a tree on the curb, but you're gonna impact a tree that's closer to the property, so.
Yeah, one of the discussions that Mr. Levine and I had is that we can work with the property owners, and there may be some of them that want tree grates, if you're gonna have a wider sidewalk, maybe have tree grates where they could have a tree, but it's still, you know, you can still walk on it, and it's still a wider sidewalk, and they can provide irrigation under the sidewalk and whatnot, so they don't have to water the sidewalk or the road, in this case. So, you know, I think that there are some design things that we could do to make trees possible, because again, I think one of the things that, you know, we've heard from the council, and we want to try to do that, is to develop a tree canopy in our community. And, um, you talk about Mr. Tree, you're looking at him, and hates, hates a tree lover, so I think we would look at any way we could to preserve some of those trees, including maybe some, some tree grates on some of that wider sidewalk to, to let people do that.
Well, I'm glad you say that, because if I lived there and I would be looking at maybe those trees being gone, I know they would provide shade for my home, and, you know, so I'm gonna be very interested in hearing what those two property owners have to say there, and is there any, um, plans for a street light there, at that corner, any oper, I mean, if we're gonna be laying concrete, do we have any plans for additional lighting there?
It's not part of this project as it's, was scoped out, uh, with, with the two-year implementation plan. Um, and I, you know, I, there, when we did the master lighting plan for the city, every street was covered, I can't tell you exactly where those were planned for this street, but there was a plan, if they're not there now, there was a plan to put in new.
Okay, so when, when this comes back to us, could you have that information about if, if there is in fact a, a street light that is planned for that? And if, you know, when was that being planned to be installed, maybe we need to rearrange some of that, so that we're going to be installing a tree, you know, a street light there, a light, at some point, maybe we need to have a definitive point, and it's while this construction is going on. It just makes more sense.
So, am I hearing a suggestion that the street lights would be potentially included as part of this project?
That would be my suggestion, yeah.
I, I mean, I kind of agree, I mean, at least let's look at it, right now, you're not, you're, and I can't blame you, you don't have the master plan that you had for lighting there, but it, I think that should be a decision that the council has an opportunity to make, to say that we, either, we can't afford it right now, or we wanna increase the scope of the project.
Sure.
But I, I think that should be a decision that we're able to make.
Well, especially if we're, if we're talking about making this, you know, sidewalk larger, so that people can go to the new project, lighting should be part of that, because people don't shop just during the sunlight hours, you know, some people shop at night.
It's, it's certainly, um. it's certainly not an issue, really an issue for us, as I found out for the project that you, you tasked us to do for lighting east of Thirteenth Street, which SDGNI is working on. They, they're installing those at no cost to the city. Well, let me rephrase that. There's not enough front cost to us. There is a, is, there is a ongoing cost, and their installation is part of that, and it's ongoing cost. So, you know, it's probably, I don't know, fifteen dollars a light per month that we're gonna be paying for those lights. So every time we add a light, it adds to the city lighting bill, but, um, in terms of, unless there's not enough poles there, like utility poles now, that there would not be any additional construction costs on our part. It would be the ongoing maintenance costs from them. So it can certainly be looked at if council wants it.
Thank you. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
So, Mr. Levine, you're just looking that, that we just asked you to move forward, the idea of trying to design this work with the community and come back?
I wanted to get your concurrence, that this is at least a base, uh, plan to start from. You're okay with that, and also that I engage the neighborhood with it.
I think that that, we've given some input from ourselves. Do you have enough to move forward?
I do, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item five point four. Mr. Levine.
Mayor Council, also, uh, as in the previous project, the two-year implementation plan, uh, included, um, a slurry seal project for this, within the city. And at the time, uh, when you approved the two-year implementation plan, at my behest, you, um, set aside a hundred thousand dollars for a slurry seal on city streets, for streets that the city staff and the city engineer selected as the best candidates. Uh, we, we, uh, selected, um, South Sea Coast, uh, from IB Boulevard to South City Limits, Palm Avenue between Sea Coast Drive and Third, Donix Avenue between Thirteenth and Ninth. And, uh, we had also selected at the same time, um, Imperial Beach Boulevard between Fifth and Ninth. Uh, when the engineer's estimate came in, um, it was pretty clear that I couldn't do that, all of those street sections. So I put in, as an additive bid, um, the Imperial Beach Boulevard between Fifth and, and Ninth, and that's a separate additive bid. Um, the bids came in, we had, had four of them, as you see on your, uh, staff report. And, um, the bids were all substantially higher than the engineer's estimate. We, we advertised this when the oil prices were a lot higher than they are today. But, um, I'm recommending, the staff's recommending, that we proceed with an award of the contractor, the lowest qualified bidder, which is Royal and Slurry Seal, um, and that you include the additive bid, uh, um, uh, for, um, a total of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five fifty-nine, um, and do all, all four street sections that are listed, um, and, and appropriate the additional dollars necessary to cover that cost.
Mayor Council, one thing I should probably point out is these are not general fund monies. These are gas tax monies that can only be spent for road improvements. And we do have adequate funding in our gas tax to complete this project.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Levine or Mr. Hall on this item?
Just one real quick. Can you just give the general, like, just a, the short version of what this seal is?
Sure. It's, it's an oil base with a, a, a fine aggregate that is mixed with the oil that covers the surface of the existing asphalt. It does not dig out anything. It'll fill the cracks that are in the street that currently. Uh, then this is applied over the top of that, and then the striping and, and signage is, is all replaced, uh, as part of this project. So there'll be new stop bars, new stop, uh, symbols on the, on the street. New parking stalls on South Sea Coast, uh, striped in. There's no, there's no sidewalk, no curb and gutter. There's no concrete as part of this project at all. It's just, it, the purpose of a slurry seal is, is a, and a, a cost-effective way to extend the life of a street between overlays. How long? Um, usually, they say five-plus years.
Any other questions for Ms. Levine? So what we have is a resolu, resolution to award the contract as the staff has outlined, and that resolution number is, seventy-five twenty-five. Motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Mayor Proten Patton, please vote. Motion carried unanimously by those present.
And moving on to item five point five, Mr. Homer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, let me pull it up here really quick for you. You guys should all be very familiar with, um, my annual germ report that we have. This is our stormwater management program for the city. And the reason why we do this is part of our stormwater program, which, um, or which is implemented through our jurisdictional uh, stormwater management plan, explicitly called out that we do, uh, at least annually, update the city and council and give the public an opportunity to provide comment that they have on implementation of our stormwater management program. Uh, so this is our annual update to council for you guys to have any questions. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the program anyways, so I'll, I'll run through this quickly again, because I seem to do it quicker every single year. But in two thousand thirteen, we updated a new stormwater permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That new permit required us to develop watershed management plans for, uh, for the future of directing and implementing our, our stormwater management programs. We're currently in the process of developing, in this city, the Tijuana River and the San Diego Bay water quality improvement plans. These things will be, um, presented to the, the, uh, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they're due in the summer of two thousand and fifteen. But until then, we're required to implement our exact same stormwater programs that we've been implementing since about two thousand and seven. And that's what this annual report is reporting to, to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This is our city's implementation of our stormwater management program. This includes, um, stormwater code, code abatement. We call it illicit discharge detection elimination. It requires us to put conditions on development projects, um, of certain size. Different sized development projects require different scale of stormwater best management practices or BNP's in them. Once these development projects actually start being developed in the ground, then we have to ensure that when you're in the construction phase, you actually have to implement stormwater BNP's, um, ea, on each construction site. You also have municipal stormwater BNP's, commercial BNP's, uh, BNP's required for residential areas. Under the new permit, these are all called existing development, and they're under a new category. Probably reporting on from here, we'll be calling these areas just existing development, existing operation and maintenance of, of existing sites. Initially, we got public education and participation. This is the education and participation component, or at least a small component of it, and a fiscal analysis report that we, uh, provide to the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board. So our city has about five miles of storm drains, almost two hundred and fifty, uh, catch basin inlets, uh, two stormwater diverters. These are the ones on the beach, so we don't have any water running to the beach during dry weather, and at least captures the first, um, first flush of any rain events to keep our beaches clean. Uh, and we also have a number of new stormwater treatment structures. As we implement a lot of our capital improvement projects, we're also implementing stormwater treatment, uh, systems into them. For example, uh, the, the Palm, the Echo Bike Way put down Palm Avenue. Those have infiltration areas for stormwater just to capture some of the, the dry weather flow and some of like the, the rain events to infiltrate into the ground. It helps eliminate some of the pollutants that, that would otherwise go into receiving waters. So to run through some of our components pretty quickly, uh, what we did this year, uh, we provided, uh, conditions on twenty-nine development projects. And these are, you can see on the charts, the, uh, what we've done from previous years. We've had an, uh, sixty-four active construction projects. There are discretionary projects, uh, eight CAPs and two priority development projects. One of them was the, the hotel that was, uh, that was finished this year. We required inspections of, uh, commercial businesses. Uh, we inspected sixty-seven commercial businesses this year. And this has been fairly consistent with the number of businesses we have. These, these mainly target, um, food service establishments, auto facilities, um, animal centers, things that have potential to create stormwater pollution. And, uh, responded to seventy-one code enforcement cases related for stormwater. So moving ahead, um, we're gonna still continue to implement this existing program until we adopt the new water quality improvement plans. These are the ones that are gonna be approved in about summer of two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we're currently doing a, a whole lot of outreach, um, both with public workshops, with a watershed consultation panel, with, uh, individual meetings with the co-committees in the county, and with, uh, regular meetings with the water board and trying to develop these things with the, the intent that the water board has made with, with the new regulations. So once the things are, um, more in a finalized, uh, format, we'll bring it back here to city council for you guys to, to be updated on the plan, and it'll definitely get your approval before we submit it to the water board, uh, in the summer. So with that, I'll take any questions you guys have.
I'll ask the first question. So if you, we have to adopt this new stuff in summer of next year, are you gonna come back to us and give us an idea where we're being told to go?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll come back and tell you where we're going and how much more it's gonna cost.
That could be more exciting than some others, right? Okay, thanks. Ms. Bragg?
Thank you. You know, I remember the very first, the concrete work, and it was, it was as big as that. So Chris, that you whittled it down to these pages is amazing. But I do have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, under the commercial business inspection program, why do you go back? Because there's, you have to go back as a follow-up. Why do you have to go back?
So the businesses that we had follow-ups were the ones that actually had, um, some type of deficiency, whether they had, uh, a poorly maintained grease trap or intercept, or one that wasn't being maintained, or, uh, I mean, it, it could be excessive trash in the parking lot. Or, uh, a, a, any type of, uh, of code infi, uh, code violation that, that requires a follow-up investigation. That's, that's what we, we consider as a follow-up.
Okay, well, it looks like you're inspecting about the same number of businesses every year, but I see a decline in the number of follow-ups. So if businesses are responding, then it could be they're understanding the program. It looks like in 'oh, seven and eight, nine, we were not able to make it through. So our businesses, they're understanding these programs much better.
I, I would say the businesses are definitely starting to know the city very well and beginning to expect our stormwater inspections every year. And to that extent, they're definitely, um, very familiar with, with what they're required to do. And might I add that the new require, or the new stormwater permit is actually gonna give us flexibility to do less inspections just because we've been doing them for the last fifteen years in this community, and we don't have a huge turnover in a lot of the, the restaurant salaries that, that we can modify our program down. Instead of having to inspect every single one of them every year, we could probably do one every five years and then just respond to code cases that are reported to the city. So that's the new direction I'm looking at going to, where we can actually save some staff time and effort on implementing some of these programs. But the, the, the intent of the, this permit is that the region board said, well, we'll, we'll let you be flexible on this end, but we want you to do more on, on this other end. And right now, we, we don't have a, a sure answer of what the more on the other end is gonna be like if we give up on the, uh, less inspections.
So historically, is it always the same businesses that are out of clients or having these issues?
There is a few businesses are, that are, that are repeat offenders. Uh, you, you definitely get to know the inside of some of these food service establishments and, uh, what's going on.
So I, what I'm interested in is how do we get them to not appear on that list again? I mean, you know, we're, we're all about clients. We have to really get a grasp so that we can, like, well, is, are these, was they so onerous that they just maybe don't have staffing to do it? Or is it, when you said we would only maybe go with them once every five years, I'm a little afraid that that there's, okay, well, we're not gonna burn up a year, so, yeah, that's, yeah, we're gonna start, but.
Yeah. A, a lot of the requirements of what stormwater requires you to do for businesses is just common sense, and it's good practices for your business. Keep the trash picked up out in front of your facility. If you have a bunch of, of grease spilled out over your, in your, in your, your grease storage area and your backyard property, clean it up. The very simple things that businesses should be doing, and that's what we're trying to encourage, is being a good business, is a good, this is good for your business, this is good for our community, it's good for your neighbors. Um, and that's what we're trying to reiterate, and especially if, if there's some, um, areas in our community that are, with the businesses that, that, that aren't maintaining up to par of, of even what our, our city standard should be, we'll be out there through our stormwater program just reiterating that message. And the places that are really stepping up and, and doing a good job, I would like to cut back on, on the areas where we're expressing those efforts.
You know, I, I would like to reward good behavior. So perhaps, um, if your team of commerce could, if you could coordinate with them, and they could be the good name for business, for, for the year of water, um, and, and I think other businesses, you know, everybody likes paying stock. And that might be a good incentive for that program. And then just on, uh, page, page five of the stormwater, uh, sources. What kind of, I don't see an idea, you have to print it down on the report.
A lot of common ones are over irrigation for sprinklers, or broken sprinkler pipes, or, um, people who have hooked up their washing machines to drain out into the street. Violations such as those. Um, there's always a handful every year of, um, I don't know, hyd, hydraulic fluid leaks from, from, uh, a, any type of heavy trucking equipment that has hydraulics on it. That, that seems to happen at least once a month around here. Uh, other, other ones that we have, uh, I don't know, I mean, we, you, you don't have the blatant people dumping oil down storm drains anymore, or very few people washing paint out into the street. Those are the ones that we try to get on really quickly and be aggressive about. Uh, it's more of the low line offenders and, and accidents that happen.
But as the mayor was saying earlier, we, we need to be so aware of wasted water. So if they are over irrigating, that's a huge issue.
We're actually partnering with Cal American right now because they're being directed by the State Water Resource Control Board to go after over irrigation. And we already have in a, a program in place that addresses over irrigation, so we get emails and, um, back and forth for the violations that are reported to Cal American. They report to us, and we'll follow up on them. And, um, we have this partnership, and we've met a couple of times on it, and I'm sure we'll meet annually, um, to move forward, especially if the drought continues, because it's, it's definitely a key issue that, that everyone's very aware of.
It is a key issue, but Mayor, and I have an opportunity to be discussing that with, uh, Brian Barretta, across Cal American, I think, so. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your question. Thank you very much.
We have a motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Mayor Jenny, please vote. Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Thank you. We'll take item, I believe it was two point five now. Yes, Mr. Hall? Did you have specific questions, Ms. Bragg, or did you just wanna have Mr. Hall give us kind of an overview of what we're doing here?
I did not have specific questions. I just wanted to point out that, that this was clarified about our Parks and Rec Department, the advisory board. I just wanted to point that out. There was some discussion earlier on that, and we were wondering, you know, because it was a newly formed board. So I would just wanna point it out, that it appears that that has been ironed out.
Yes. And, and what we're talking about is the city annually adopt- And, and what we're talking about is the city annually adopts a conflict of interest schedule, and we just wanted to make sure that all the right people are identified on that conflict of interest schedule. And, and we've had a few employees that have changed classifications and needed to be added to that as well. So that's what that's.
Then entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2014-7526. We have a motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Thank you. Now, we're going to adjourn our regular meeting here. On our agenda, we have a closed session that has to deal with the performance of the city manager, and then we will be returning to report out a closed session. So at this moment, I'm adjourned the regular meeting and call for the closed measure meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Bragg?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Bray?
Here.
Mayor Proton Patton?
Here.
Mayor Gianni?
Here. Entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session as posted on the agenda. We have a motion in a second. Could we please vote?
Motion carried unanimously by those present.
Thank you. We'll be back in a little bit.